Hey, hi, everyone. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Planning Board and the City Council Committee on Legislative Matters. I'm Alex Jarrett and I'll be the chair. George Kohout and I have discussed and agreed that I will chair the public hearing today for both bodies. This is the August 8th meeting and Laura, would you call the roll?
Sure, I'm Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Elkins. Pretty sure I saw her, Counselor Elkins. Maybe she stepped away for the moment. Okay, Counselor Molton.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
One more try for Counselor Elkins. Probably be joining in a few minutes. Do you want me to call the roll for planning? Or?
We, we normally don't do that, Laura. But it's not one of our procedures. I'm not sure why, but we are who we are being recorded, so.
Very good.
Thank you, Laura. So this meeting is being audio and video recorded. Next, we'll have public comment or items that aren't on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on an item? Don't see any one or hands. So we'll move to the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. This is our February 14th, 2022 meeting. And could I have a motion for approval?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins. Still not present. Counselor Molton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
That brings us to the public hearing on proposed zoning change, on proposed zoning change. And oh, also just a reminder that I am happy to be, for us to refer to each other by first names unless anyone would prefer otherwise. So we are, this is 22.141, an ordinance to amend the zoning map, 350-3.4 on Bridge Road and Cook Avenue. This was referred to the Planning Board and Legislative Matters on July 14th.
I'm sorry.
Oh, welcome, Marissa.
I'm sorry, I got a call just as it was, the meeting was starting and I had to take it. I'm very sorry.
The public hearing notice was published July 25th and August 1st in the Daily Hampshire Gazette. So if for our body, we do need to a vote to open the public hearing. So I would be happy to entertain such motion.
I'll make a motion to open the public.
Okay, motion made by Jim and seconded by Stan. Laura, roll call please on opening the public hearing.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Molton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes. And I believe the Planning Board doesn't need to do such a roll call.
Yep.
Call from previous meetings. Okay. So we will first hear from proponents and just a reminder that, you know, this is an open public hearing. It is our opportunity to hear from the public and from city staff and to ask questions. And once we close the hearing, then we will deliberate on our recommendations. Carolyn Mish from the Planning Department, would you like to speak to this?
I would, thank you. And so Laura, if you could put the map up, that would be great. This is an ordinance amendment to create an overlay district. What's referred to as a 40R district or smart growth overlay. The smart growth and 40R provisions under state statute are really a tool, an incentive that was adopted by the state to encourage housing and housing of all types really throughout the Commonwealth. But in particular affordable housing and because there are bonus payments for to the city for all the affordable housing units that would be constructed within a designated 40R or smart growth overlay district. You've seen many, several of these amendments over the years. The first 40R district was created as an overlay at the state hospital. And the city has received payments through, over several years from the state for those units. In this case, we're proposing, so the city now has two categories of overlay districts. One is smart growth overlay village hill and the other one is urban residential. And the urban residential overlay is the one that's in front of you tonight. We have an overlay possible on, in the urban residential districts. It's sort of, that's where we came up with the name. There was, there was an overlay created for one parcel. And that was also a Valley CDC parcel on Bridge Street next to Historic North Hampton. Or two doors down from Historic North Hampton. And this would be an expansion of that district and it's connected, believe it or not, through an area of concentrated development. And that's sort of what the state defined is there, there's corridor up King Street. Is that area considered a concentrated development? And so these two overlays are proposed to be associated with that district and that associated commercial development or concentrated development, I should say. The whole idea behind this is really to take advantage of the state's incentive for affordable housing and thereby utilize any bonus payments and then unit payment distribution from the state for each of the affordable housing units that we know will be developed at these locations. And the underlying zoning essentially stays the same. So, and just so you know, the state first has to approve your application. We've submitted this, I think, back in April or May to the state and we still haven't heard confirmation. They sent a, the response that is in writing from the state and they send a formal agreement to the city about the terms of the overlay. We have not received that yet and I, I will, I've been trying to get that information back, but the bottom line is before city council can make a final vote on this district, the state has to send that approval letter. So we can go through the public hearing process and so forth, but it can't go back to city council for a vote until we get that information from the state.
Thank you, Carolyn. Does anyone have questions for Carolyn? Jim?
Yeah, thank you. Carolyn, could you explain that again? So we're the, the approval process and the timing, how, what we're doing right now is we're on track to send something to council, but we don't want to vote on it until the state's approved it. So we're anticipating the state to approve this moving forward soon. Is that, we're, we're trying to time up, line up the timing of things?
Exactly. So this happened, this has happened several times. Actually, almost every time we've expanded the district, it's taken a little bit longer for the state to give us the information, the notice, essentially notice to proceed. Then we have been, you know, we've gone faster than they have. I think the last one was Laurel Street and we, I think we even had to put off the council vote the first time because we had not gotten the letter from the state.
And, and we're comfortable that the state will respond in time before the, what is it? We have 90 days or something? The, from the public hearing?
Um, yes, the 90 days I'm not concerned about. We've, we had preliminary conversations with the folks at Department of Housing and Community Development about this. So it's not, it wasn't a surprise. In fact, we worked back and forth looking at the maps and the numbers. So it's, it's just a matter of timing. I don't, I don't think we'll have a problem with the 90 days.
Okay. I, I have an additional question and so that can you explain the difference between this and how, how these particular overlays are not considered spot zoning? Because they, in, in some ways they could look that way, but there, can you explain that for us?
Sure. So the underlying zoning is not changing. This is on top of what's underneath and it, it allows additional density from what's in the underlying zone. And because it's an overlay and not changing the baseline zoning, then it's not considered spot zoning. And the only way you can meet that is by connecting it, essentially connecting the dots to the other part of the district through this area of concentrated development. And so we sent documentation to the state about how it's connected to that King Street corridor, you know, within half a mile or something like that.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you.
George?
Um, thanks Carolyn. Yeah, I always wondered when you kept saying the state, who exactly the state was, but it's D H C D, right?
Yeah. Yes.
That's state.
Um, right.
And, and the
The Commonwealth.
The Commonwealth. The only downside to this, Carolyn, I think if, if in fact, for some bizarre reason, the overlay district were accepted, Valley CDC still could go forward with their applications. Right? It's all really about the city getting these bonus payments. Okay.
Exactly.
It's the same application process for Valley CDC regardless of this new overlay district.
Right. So it's the same site plan, essentially this site plan review process. And we just copied and pasted that, those requirements into the 40R supplemental requirements. And so the same, the review is the same. And it really is just about establishing the district so that then the city is eligible for those bonus payments.
I have a question, Carolyn. If the state says one is okay and not the other, would we then just amend the order?
Yeah.
For the change rather?
Okay.
Other questions for Carolyn? Stan?
Thank you. I, I just prefaced my question by, by saying that both these projects are in Ward 1 and I appreciate the forward thinking about this district, the overlay district and, and support it. At the, when this was introduced to the council in July, I believe it was Alex who raised the, the question about the possibility of the lack of sidewalks on, on Cook Avenue being a, a potential in, you know, and I continue to get concerns expressed to me by residents of that neighborhood about adding sidewalks on Cook Avenue. I wondered, Carolyn, if you have any additional information about that at this point?
Um, I, I do not, however, I will say, I mean, there are, there are, there certainly are gaps in the sidewalk in that whole area. And the DOT is planning for sidewalk extension from Cook Avenue to Route 5, King Street, North King Street, to the proposed roundabout area as part of that project. So that would close that gap. Um, we have used almost entirely, I think, actually a hundred percent of the incentive payments so far have been used for traffic mitigation in the downtown and surrounding areas. So I don't know that we would can pledge at this point that it would, we'd expand the location of these, of the use of the incentive payments. But, you know, the city also has a prioritization of where sidewalks go. And so we also need to be mindful of that and not sort of jump the line in terms of evaluating where the needs are for sidewalks. But we definitely know about the, and that may be one of the issues that D H C D highlights in its evaluation of this one particular parcel at the end of Cook Avenue, not the Bridge Road one, because there are sidewalks there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? David?
Yeah, uh, I don't know. I feel like I'm missing something here. I don't understand. Were we zoning something because we know somebody wants to build some? I, I don't understand. Why are we not like, why not all of Cook Avenue? Why not Emily Lane? Like, why these two? Just because there's someone who wants to do a project there? Like, I, I understand it's not spot zoning, like by the letter of the law, but like de facto it is basically, because I don't, I don't get it. Like they're, they're, they can change their pro forma to account for the, like, well, I don't know what their costs and costs to the project are, but something seems really odd, honestly, to me about this. And I just, maybe I just don't know the history or like some details of why we're doing these two parcels and not others. It's truly not changing the underlying zoning, like, then why just these?
Um, so I think part of it, the part, the part of the answer is that the overlay does allow, and in, so there are two parts to the answer. One is there's a specific formula that is applicable when you submit to the state and whether or not you'd be eligible for incentive payments. And so if you have a huge area where it's not, where you really don't have capacity to build housing units, meaning the lots are already built out fully, then, then the total, there, the state is going to pay on the difference between what you could build and what this incentive allows. And so you need to show the total acreage that's available for development and the total acreage that's already developed within that. And their formula comes back and says, well, this is how much you'd be eligible for for units. And so some of it is, I mean, really, you could probably call it gerrymandering. But, so that's part of it is we want to, and we know that this is going to happen anyway. So we don't, we'd like not to lose out on the opportunity. The other part of it is, you know, would take quite a bit of undertaking to both do the calculations, like I said, for how much area is developable, but also in terms of a public. I think it would take a lot of public process to apply a large area that's outside of the downtown to this district and explain that it doesn't mean that all of a sudden all these lots are going to, you know, double or triple in density. And I think that would be the concern of, of residents is that if we're applying this, then we're saying we want all of this land to just sort of in increase in density, even though it may, there may not be the capacity there to do it. So we've picked the areas that are actually legitimately developable to expand the overlay.
I hope other people understand this better than I do.
I would note, we also have an affordable housing zoning change that we made, was it a little over a year ago? That, that allows, how does that compare in terms of the amount of density that it allows versus, which is applies in which districts? Is it? You are being.
It implies in, yeah, it applies in this district for sure. It applies in, in all districts except for the ones where we're not encouraging new housing developments. So Special Conservancy and the Parks and Recreation. So that's exactly right. So it's, the applicant could move forward under the affordable, apply for a site plan for two and a half times the underlying density allowed in a district using that provision and site plan. The difference is if we use the state, the state version, those same residential units could be built, but then the state gets a payment, I mean, the city gets a payment from the Commonwealth for those new units, even though it could also be developed under this affordable housing zoning.
Right. But by that logic, like all this, all of the lots on Cook Avenue are under built by that logic, like it's all developable?
Um, potentially for affordable housing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that already exists. That's my understanding. And so the, the difference here, in my understanding is if we do this, we get the incentive payment. We are not really changing anything about what is able to be built in, in these districts. Is that correct?
If you're just focused on affordable housing unit, that is correct.
And if, if we weren't, would there be something that this overlay gives us that wouldn't otherwise?
So, so in the overlay, the density is allowed to occur, but the city doesn't receive payments for the units that are not permanently, or have a restriction of 30, at least a 30-year restriction on them. So in, so you could still build the units out with a 40R overlay with the affordable housing provision, that sort of local 40B that was adopted a year ago. You could get a mix of affordable and market rate unit. But 50% of any unit, 50% of the total units built on a parcel would have to be deed restricted to meet the affordability standards. And also, as we mentioned before, they're not, because it's, it's not in the 40R overlay, there wouldn't be that incentive payment.
So every time we catch wind that an affordable housing project is underway, can we be like jumping the gun and changing the zoning before they apply for a site plan approval or, or go through the process so we can get more city payments? Is that what I'm hearing?
Um, well, the state set it up as a, as housing incentive, a housing incentive program. So essentially, um, yes, it might make sense to do this, particularly when it's in an area of concentrated development. And it meets the state criteria for that. But it wouldn't necessarily be everywhere.
Does the size of the projects have any relevance to being eligible for this overlay?
No, as I mentioned, there, there's one tiny parcel on Bridge Street that was approved. And it was less than a quarter of an acre, I think.
So we have an affordable housing bonus across all of the urban residential zones now, right?
Yes.
But this changes it. So there's actually, there's no formula for the density allowed. It's actually just, it's removing all zoning restrictions and we just have to go through site plan approval? Is that how I understand it?
No, the 40R zoning, the 40R provisions in the code mirror what site plan approval. So it's the same review process. It's just called 40R instead of site plan. And they'll, the applicant would get a 40R permit. Then we record that with the Commonwealth and record how many units ultimately receive a certificate of occupancy that are deed restricted for affordability and, and track those units.
The, the payments from the state, when the city accrues them over time, do they go back towards the mission of affordability? Affordable housing?
No.
It just goes into the general fund?
It goes into the general fund, except that I will say that the whole point of the payment is to help offset the potential impacts of new housing in different districts. And so the way that we've interpreted and used that is with new housing, you get new increased, potential increase in traffic. And, and the need to mitigate for those increased trips. And so, so far the city has, and the mayor has allocated, a previous mayor and current mayor, I believe, is, will continue that as far as I know, applied it to design upgrades. In fact, most of that money has gone to Picture Main Street Project and safety improvements and design leading into Main Street, because most of that money came from the state hospital build out.
Other questions? Well, I'd like to open it up to other members of the public now. I see we have Jessica Allen from the Valley CDC here. Would you be, like to speak to this, Jessica?
Uh, I mean, nothing really specifically. We're in support of it. Anything that any municipality can do to help our permitting process run a little bit smoother, really helps our development process and helps us to get units online quicker. So we're grateful for anything that the city can do to, to expedite a permitting process for us. The city is above and beyond what most municipalities do in terms of their zoning for this type of work. So we're really appreciative for them to even consider this right now.
Thank you.
If you have any questions about the project itself, I'm happy to answer that, like, you know, number of units and that, but I, I think everybody's fairly familiar with it.
I have a question, I have a question about what you just said. So in what way does this make your permitting process more expedited?
So, you know, I'm, I'm looking at, Carolyn had mentioned that it's a site plan review process and so that's a fairly quick process anyway. When I initially looked at the zoning, it looked like it was a special permit process. So for me, anything that's a special permit process is, is difficult. Um, for us, I mean, we have to abide by design guidelines under the 40R. I think that the 40R program really is this great carrot and stick approach for both municipalities and for developers. It allows us to have a by right use and it gives the municipality the ability to have some design guidelines set into place and to receive incentive payments. So, you know, for us, I think anytime we can do anything quickly and expeditiously, it really helps us. For us, we're applying for financing for this project this coming year and we need to have permits in hand by the fall in order to apply for that funding. So what I'm, I'm hearing, that's a little concerning to me is in terms of the, the letter from the state, but it doesn't sound like that's going to impede our permitting process. It seems like it's going to be, it's going to be quick either way. Um, most municipalities aren't as gracious with site plan approval when it comes to affordable housing. They tend to make it a lot more difficult. So far, 40R really is, it helps us in most municipalities. To me, it sounds like this is a huge benefit more for the city than it is for the development team, because we can, we're able to do this anyway. In a pretty expeditious permitting process.
Thank you, Jessica. Other questions? I don't see anyone else from the public who might like to speak to this. So it sounds like it's time to entertain a motion to close the public hearing for both bodies unless anyone else has anything they'd like to ask. Okay, could I have a motion from Legislative Matters?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, a motion made by Stan and I'll give that to Marissa for the second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Roll call please.
Counselor Molton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Okay, and with the Planning Board, like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close, close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Melissa and seconded by David. Any discussion? I'm not sure who, does Laura do the roll call or Carolyn?
Um, usually George does.
Oh, usually George does.
So we'll go that route. So the motion's been made, no discussing, all those, we'll start with Melissa.
Yes.
And Jenna.
Yes.
And David.
Yep.
And George votes yes also.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Would. Would anyone like to make a motion for a recommendation?
I'd move that we Legislative Matters puts this forward to the council when it's time with a positive recommendation.
Second.
A motion made by Marissa and seconded by Stan for a positive recommendation. And do we need one as well from the planning board before we discuss? Okay.
I I'll move that we recommend to approve the motion. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Usually we do.
Second that.
Yeah, I recommend to approve the amendment, I guess I should say.
Okay, the motion made by David and seconded by Melissa. Okay, discussion.
I I think this is, this seems to make a lot of sense. I'm very uncomfortable with the idea that we have like. I love that we have a close relationship with certain affordable housing developers. That's a great thing. What I don't like is that like. What if there's some other person who we don't know who is an affordable housing developer, who wants to do something on a nearby site? And doesn't know that we're so good to work with that will change the zoning to make it easier or go through an easier permit process? I I don't like the the fogginess of this, that like if it's a good thing and it doesn't change the underlying zoning, let's just like. Do it more places. And you know, I don't know, it seems odd to me, but I I can't say, hey, there's not anything wrong with doing it here.
Well, David, to answer part of your question, I think any developer who is interested in doing affordable housing of a small scale or larger scale. Is first going to meet with the planning office, Carolyn specifically, who will probably let them know of all the. The benefits of the enhancements that there, that's available to them, such as this one. Um, because the city is open arms, you know, to affordable housing, so. I don't, I don't think there's kind of an inside game to this. And I guess I understood Carolyn's rationale about if we try to extend this overlay to large neighbors on a mass, if the large neighborhoods in a mass scale. There would be so much discussion and so much angst out there in the public about their piece of property or their neighborhood. And that's a process maybe we'd want to go through in the future, but.
I mean, we, we just feasibly doubled the zoning for affordable housing and it was not that big a deal. I mean, we just did that. I I mean, I think, I encourage our. Future planning director to think big.
You're going with me.
Other questions, comments? I'll weigh in and say I I think this is, this is a good idea. I think that. I appreciate David's interest in expanding this, but I think that the consequence would be that it would. Open it to not just affordable housing development to this density, but that it would open it to. A, to. To any kind of, any development. If I have that right, and that the, so, and. Our current zoning just allows that for affordable housing or a mix, at least fifty percent. So that, that would be the concern to expanding it to all, although I certainly think that's an interesting thing we could talk about. And that essentially we are doing this so we can get the the incentive payment. For these particular lots. So that's, that's my understanding and I I feel comfortable moving this forward. Okay, any other discussion? All right, so for Legislative Matters, roll call on a positive recommendation?
Or Nash.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
And Councilor Fowler, I'm sorry. Oh goodness. I'm so sorry. Moulton. Did I get him already? Thanks.
George for the planning board.
So Melissa, positive voting on a positive recommendation for the amended amended order.
Yes, and when you're ready for me to be a counselor, just let me know.
And Jenna.
Yes.
David?
Yep.
And George, yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously with both bodies. Is there any other business we have before us, Laura? No, I don't see that except for new business.
The planning board, the planning board could adjourn and leave you folks to. New business or gossip, whatever happens. Is there a motion to adjourn the planning board portion of the public hearing?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thanks Jenna, motion to adjourn at five forty, we'll call it. Any discussing? Anybody want to hang around? Okay, let's go again and we'll start with Melissa.
Yes.
And Jenna.
Yes.
And David.
Yep.
And George, unanimous.
All right, thank you, planning board.
Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Is there any new business for Legislative Matters? We would like to see on a future meeting. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Made by Stan, seconded by Marissa. Roll call.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
And Councilor Nash.
Yes.
Thank goodness, we're back to the familiar order.
All right, we are adjourned.
You are adjourned. Welcome back Laura.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good night.
Okay.
Good to see you all.
Yeah, good night.